Okay, the time is now 6:33. I'd like to call the quarter. The August 14th regular meeting of Village Warden.
Trustee Gray? Yes? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn? Derek? Pearson?
Here.
Pop? Here.
Gracik? Present.
I know, that's the second.
Ask to be discussed.
Yeah. If you'll join with us in the Pledge of Legends.
Pledge of Legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item C1, open to the public. Agenda items only. Do you have anything you'd like to speak about regarding the agenda? Okay. No takers? Letter D? Consent?
I don't know, I don't see it on the agenda. Anyway, I'm coming up here.
Yes, please.
I'm Margaret Horn. At the Public Court Street. I'm coming up on behalf of my kids. Peter, who usually videotapes, has, you know, been involved with this, but he is really hoping that when the powers that be look at the property over there, that they consider areas for the older kids to do stuff, i.e. sand volleyball and things like that. So, I was wondering if there could be maybe an inclusion of maybe some responsible kids that could look at the plans and be a part of making all that.
You got some big kids sitting there on the board, too.
Yeah, I know, but it's, you know, they want to, they want to be part of it and they wanna, they wanna be able to contribute. Peter's not here because he's lifeguarding, but I'm kind of talking to him because we have little does he know.
Margaret, just so you understand, we have been, the Public Court Superintendent, myself, have actually been talking to reviewing some of our options. We do need to come up with an overall master plan for our area. One of the considerations has been to include possibly two or three sand volleyball courts in the general area here. But, all that's based on engineering studies and things of that sort, because you gotta do it right. And I know that we have a proposal from one of the engineering firms that would still see, and we can address that.
Okay, I just don't want it to turn into a time to talk.
Counsel.
All right.
Marking up the comments. All right, anybody else for the open to the public?
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Speaker, 5605 West Bondin B. Just wanted to introduce myself to those of the board members that did not meet me. I submitted a proposal for your website redesign along with information on doing a little bit of background before going forward. My company has worked on websites from the Oper's Chamber of Commerce, Oper's Greenfest, and will be done independent work on SmartCard, Oper's website, and other major corporations. So, it's nice to meet you all, Jennifer.
Anybody else for agenda items? Okay. No taker, no additional takers on the open to the public. We'll go to the consent agenda. I'll accept the motion to approve the consent agenda. So, is that it? Pearson, raise it, do any discussion?
There is two bills in there. You don't mind me pointing them out real quick, because I don't want the public to be deceived in a way that, we're trying to deceive, but I don't mean it that way. Just for information purposes, it's 01, second page, M&amp;J underground. Cleaning out a couple of our sewer lines and banhole repair, things like that. We purchased a very expensive machine that does some of that work.
True.
But this bill is from a situation that was done long before we purchased the new equipment, so don't think that we're not using our equipment to its fullest measure. End of report, end of comment.
Anybody else? Kirk? We have a roll call on that.
Trustee Horn? Yes. Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracik?
Yes.
Gray? Yes. Gonzalez?
Letter E, Communications clerk? Tommy clerk. Administrators report. Ah, yes, Spencer. We have somebody here for our executive session that keep the village from having to pay unnecessary amount of, anyhow, if we could, the executive session up to this point now would be appreciated, and we'll come back and continue the rest of the meeting. This is particular labor protection. So, if we could have a motion to move to executive session pertaining to... Labor? And litigation? All right, Pearson, raise your call and go to the executive session.
It'll be a key.
Sir?
Do you have any clue how long this might take for the public? Half hour? Twenty minutes?
Depends on how much the trustee is talking to the vendor.
Is that correct? The infirmity?
Trustee Pop? I would expect us to hold it to two-way, we took a lot of time knowing that the public is out there.
If we have additional items, it's still good to be aggressive. It doesn't require carry one. Roll call, please.
Just, excuse me, trustee Pearson? Yes. Pop? Yes. Gracik? Yes. Gray? Yes. Gonzalez?
Yes.
We shall return.
Until such time as it is necessary to communicate with one another and they can switch to a common frequency and therefore communicate citywide in, for example, you know, an emergency and, you know, whatever would cause them to communicate with one another. Additionally, you'll be able to communicate with the police department, the SWAT cars, as well as the fire department, if I'm not mistaken, and the chief's department. Can you validate that?
It would be a VHF frequency and the SUV will communicate as long as it's programmed.
Very good.
Is that listen only, or is that?
Oh, no, that's talk.
Talk to?
Two-way, yes, sir. And this ban, the new ban for emergency management, does, will it be able to encompass more than three radios, their frequency?
They're all interchangeable.
Yes, they can, they can, as emergency management grows, they can certainly add radios to it on that same frequency.
I believe, if I'm correct, that if Public Works needs an extra radio, they could take a EMA radio and vice versa if necessary, because they're interchangeable, they're both set to all frequencies.
And they are programmed identical, yes, sir.
Correct, okay.
You are correct.
It's just how they're being allocated to which departments. Someone want to make a motion in favor of accepting that proposal?
I make that motion.
Yes, sir. Do I need to state anything specific on that? I'm sorry. Backup. Motion to waive dead process on this particular transaction?
Sir?
Gonzalez and Pearson?
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
I thought we did send this out, your quote says here, we received three quotes.
Trustee Horn, that was originally sent out for the 10 portable radio purchase, and it was at that time that we discussed with some of the vendors, the potential for the citywide repeated frequency. But the quotes, I just wanted to indicate that initially we had quoted the portable radios and that minor had come in, at least expensive, and I was just trying to lay the groundwork that they are reputable and they had been quoted at some point, we're just not, you know, pulling them out of the air without even history with them.
So, could we have a, any other discussion on the motion to bypass bidding? Okay. Can I have a vote on the bypass bid?
Trustee Horn? Yes. Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Now, accept the motion in favor of purchasing? No, I feel like, so there's Pearson and Gracik, are you guys still good with?
It was Pop and Pearson.
Okay, Pop and Pearson, are you guys still good with the motion to approve the purchase of the equipment as stated?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gracik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Item F2 on your agenda is village auditor services. My explanation is just that, it's laid out, we received, we have three quotes for auditing services from Letky Associates, Letky Company, excuse me, who have done our auditing for the past few years, the Condon Group, and also Sickich, which is an auditing firm. Our original firm gave us a two-year quote for 2013, 2014 at $36,500 each year. The Condon Group was a three-year package, 2013, 14, and 15, starting at $35,000 with a 2.5% cost of living adjustment each year after the initial year. And Sickich also provided a three-year quote for 2013, 14, and 15, and those amounts are $38,075, $39,217, and $40,393 respectively. After meddling through all that, certainly all three of those are on file for review. Staff is recommending engaging the Condon Group for three years as they are the least expensive over the term of the contracts.
Any discussion on that?
I do. Could we, as a matter of practice, gun an audit every year? Yes, it's required. It is required? Yes, sir. Okay.
It's not unusual to select a different audit firm than what we've used in the past when you have a transition of leadership. And so, the fact that we've got a couple other options other than the existing ones, it's just a good consideration. Mr. Pearson?
Question, I noticed that Letky did not include the police pension, did they submit at all?
Because the police pension was audited, but it was not audited by the municipal firm, by Letky, and that forced the police pension fund to get an audit on their own. That is not the best expenditure of municipal dollars, if you will. If you look at the sense of having the police pension fund do their own audit, they're a young fund, severely underfunded at this point because they were just established after the municipality reached 5,000. Any shortfalls in the future will, by law, have to be made up by the municipality anyway, so why would we force them to spend the monies early on when they're severely underfunded? You know, when it's probably, well, it is more efficient for them to be included in our audit as an entire village. So, we're picking them up, and those were quoted in the other two, the Condon Group as well as Sickich. Yes, sir.
Is there any specific preference other than the fact that, I mean, the two other firms are equally talented and skilled and?
Very reputable, both doing municipal work, checked with a couple of references, very happy with the way that they proceed and operate and conduct themselves. It's merely, at this point, the dollar driven.
Sure. Okay. So, no further discussion on that? We'll accept the motion to approve the Condon Group as the lowest bid for auditing services for the, what is it, three-year contract is what they're looking for there? As stated?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Kirk? Horn and Gonzalez? Yes, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Gracik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Item number F3 on my agenda has to do with Percy Builders. And Percy Builders is the developer for Eagle Fair subdivision, and just a little quick history, when the downturn in the economy occurred, many municipalities and subdivisions came to a screeching halt, and subsequently, we have what we have in Eagle Fair, and that simply is a subdivision that isn't completed. We have infrastructure that is failing at this point. We have residents that live there and, you know, deserve a higher standard of living as it pertains to infrastructure. Mr. Flanagan has come forth as Percy Builders to rebuy that subdivision and once again start building. He is before the board to lay forth his plan and how that's going to take place, and at this time, I would ask Shane Flanagan to step forward and present his case. I would like to say there are a couple of obstacles that appear to be in the way a little bit. One is, there is an ordinance that prohibits speculative homes, and the second would be, there is a $12,000 impact fee on each lot, undeveloped lot out there, that is due when either the lot changes hands through sale or upon issuance of a building program.
Mr. Flanagan, thank you guys for taking me here this evening. Again, as Dave said, you know, I developed the subdivision, and we sold some lots, we had some different builders in there, we built houses. People looked for bigger houses, we built bigger houses, and then once the economy took a turn, we got big houses there and we didn't sell them like so. I know we need to get the subdivision finished, I don't want to leave it the way it is, I got a lot of time and money invested in it, and the village has a lot of money invested, and the homeowners deserve, you know, just to get it done. The only way I can see getting it done is, we start off by, like the covenant says, 1800 square feet, and I had a meeting with the mayor, I had two meetings with Mr. Wallace, and I think we decided we can do a transition, I want to start off like we're 20, 2300 square foot houses, which is above the, our covenants were 1800, and gradually, maybe try to build them back up to bigger houses, like, you know. But I, I hope the board will approve that we can start off with smaller houses, so to give people a chance to be competitive with other builders, just like, you know. We can't go into 3,000 square foot houses again there, you know, we need a house that's affordable, I think. I got Mike Giuliani here from Peninsula, and he's done an analysis, market analysis, and we need to be around 250,000 to move these homes.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, I've asked Mr. Flanagan to present a, you know, well-rounded program, he has lined up a financial.
That's great, I got the mayor group here, Gabriel and Robert, they're going to finance the houses for me, and we got Gabriel and Robert to work on with US Bank and ones for our loan, or to do the in loans, you know, so I won't have to direct bank and I'm working with these guys, I've worked with them before in the city of Chicago, and we have the group working with Asia, and they have the funds to help me build the houses, you know.
Yeah, if I may, sure. Just so that the trustees are aware, there's been some issues in that subdivision that were unfortunate, and I'll just leave it at that for the moment. Keep in mind that as we want to deal with the infrastructure in that area, the impact fees are going to help us towards that. It doesn't serve the village's best interest to have vacant lots in an area like that, and we really need to recapture the impact fees in order so we can actually have the money necessary to actually at least put a portion of that towards the roads, sidewalks, and everything else in that area there. The point of concern I think we have is going to be with step sizing, I think is what we discussed. If you've got a 3,000 square foot home, you know, putting a 2,300 square foot home next to it is going to be offensive, if you will, to the value of the neighboring properties.
Hey, I understand that, Mr. Mayor, and I've talked to, I've talked to other builders here, and we met with Dave, and we're going to try to do a transition, like, we've got a lot of vacant lots, there's a lot of lots where there's 10, 15 lots.
I understand.
But there's no houses, and like, my idea was to put a model in, the two models where there's no houses besides, you know. Like, I got the cul-de-sac there, we got by the park where there's no houses and stuff, but put two models there where you're not affecting any.
Well, and there again, if I can continue, just trying to bring the board to speed up some of this. There was discussion about having transition, step sizing, 5% or something thereabouts to the adjacent home, maybe no more than 10% to three homes away. I mean, there's some things you need to contemplate with that because you don't want it to be so significant. In the event that we were to even implement something like this as a part of our zoning ordinance in general, it's not a bad idea, consider doing that across the board, not just in this one, you know, covenant, you know, area, you know, one subdivision. And then, worst-case scenario, you have an older part of town where you have a limited space or something like that, somebody could always come for a special use if they needed to, on exception. But when you say there's no homes being affected by, where you're talking about, like, it's next to a park and there's not any homes developed next to it, in all reality, you have to take into account the next closest home.
Correct.
And that's really going to be some of the measure. So, if you're wanting to step down to 2,300 square foot home, in my opinion, you also need to take into account, you also need to take into account the next closest home, or the next three closest homes in some cases. And I'm not exactly sure legally how you define that, because you might be on the end of a, edge of a road or something like that, but you really have to take that into account, the step sizing of that. And I think you even brought up the suggestion that not just, and I'm not sure how you go about wording this legally, if we're going to go forward with this, but it's not just the actual square footage of the home, but the frontage of the home to give the similar impression from the road that it carries itself as a similar sized home, even though it may be downsized a little bit.
All right. And, Mr. Mayor, those are all good points, we did, I did have those discussions with Mr. Flanagan, and basically, as an example, and it will be before the board because I have asked the attorney to draw up an ordinance on that, and there is a draft. However, the way that we're suggesting it works is that if you were to have a 3,200 square foot home, if you wanted to build a house next to it on a vacant lot, it could not vary in square footage, livable square footage, any more than, let's just for the sake of discussion, 10% and up or down. And then, the next house couldn't vary any more than 10%. But if you had a 3,200 square foot house here and three lots in between, and you want to build on lot four, it would have to meet the criteria that a reduction of 10% from this and 10% from that and 10% from that would meet the criteria for the house on the fourth lot. You'd have to leave room to ramp up to the existing larger home, because the one thing that we want to do is protect the value of existing homes. And we understand that the market has changed and people are calling for smaller homes, we understand that. But, we're left with a situation that we have to deal with, and we have to be fair to our residents that already live there, as well as we have to be fair to the tax dollars which are going to be spent to, on that infrastructure if we don't start to get some of this impact fee back.
Right.
And that's roughly where we stand on that. Mr. Flanagan and everyone that I've met with understands, and, you know, he himself owns 33 lots, and there's some other builders that own, you know, four and three and five lots and things of that nature, and, you know, they're going to have to work together in order to complete this type of transition here. But in the end, we believe that it can come out for the good for everyone involved.
Now, the best, looking at the agenda specifically here refers to this as a discussion, so that's what we're looking to attain at this point, is a discussion, this is not for a vote at this point. Consensus perhaps, but not necessarily a vote?
If the board felt comfortable, we would prefer a vote to, just to move it forward because of the building season and so forth, but it's certainly, the whole idea here is that the control lies with the board.
Question?
Yes.
And in this proposal, I didn't see anything about any floor plan as well, and you mentioned that cul-de-sac there, the only cul-de-sac that I can recall in Eagle Fair is Falcon. There's two.
There's two, yeah.
Yes? Okay, where's the other? Or was?
Where's the others? I'm thinking a lot.
Well, which cul-de-sac are you referring to actually build one of these spec?
The cul-de-sac right, right east of Mary Street.
So, they're not? Not? No.
Cardinal, of course. That's the other one.
Cardinal.
Cardinal.
All right.
It's on Cardinal, of course.
Cardinal. Cardinal four, yeah. Lot 101 and lot 101, 102, all everybody's house. Lot 97, I think, has like a 3,000 square foot house. Lot 103 is like 20, maybe 27, 27.
So, we meet that 10% spread?
Not an actual cul-de-sac.
One, all set.
Yeah, that's 97. That's about 3,000 square foot. 2850, I bet that happens, I said.
So, even if we meet that spread, we're still top of the?
The yellow ones are very difficult.
The yellow ones represent the lots that Mr. Flanagan owns. Apologize for not bringing this up earlier. So, you can see that they're scattered around, but he is probably the major landholder that remains for vacant property in Eagle Fair Estates.
And you mentioned lot 101 that you want to put there?
About 100, lot 101, like, all that, except for the one house, lot 97, all that, all the lots are vacant. And, like, lot 100, all the ones, there's a house there on 97, all these are vacant.
If I'm not mistaken, lot 60 and 61 are occupied, are they not? Are there homes there?
No, no, there's two houses, there's two houses on Falcon, right here, and then there's three houses over here, three or four houses here, but these are all vacant here.
No, sir, there's more than two houses built there on Falcon Court?
No, there's two, there's two on the left hand side as you go into Falcon, and then there's like, this lot is vacant here, and all these are vacant, 68, 66, 67, 68, 65.
Now, the lot that's vacant is 70 on that corner, is that?
Right, right, yeah, these are vacant here. This lot is vacant, this house just sold.
But those houses, like, all run down there.
Yeah, around 65, these are all done. I've been 65 and 67.
You say one just sold?
This one sold here, 50, 69. It was probably 28, almost 28, you know.
All right, here's one of the things I believe we had discussed in our meeting, and I know you've had subsequent meetings, was providing us, to simplify this so the board actually knows what you're specifically asking for, and I'm not trying to kick us down the road at all, but, you know, fairness, just so the board is aware of specifically, I mean, you identified there which ones are his, I want to identify the existing homes.
Yes.
The actual square footage is documented by the assessor's office or whatever, and all the existing homes, so we can actually see at a glance, because you're asking us to vote on a lot number, you know, for approval to proceed with one item, but, you know, we actually need to identify, do we want to do 10%, or do you want to limit it to 5% to exceed a certain? identify, do we want to do 10% or do you want to limit it to 5% not to exceed a certain amount for a distant, for the proximity of homes? Or the actual adjacent property, whether there's a home there or not? My opinion is you want to deal with not causing it necessary for up or down, you know, over five empty lots, because there may be five in a row somewhere. But I personally believe you need to contend with, you know, if you've got a 3,000, 3,200 square foot home, and you've got five empty lots in the middle, do you really want it to step down 10%, 10%, 10%, 10% all the way? I mean, at some point, you're, you're down to 1,800 square feet pretty easily.
Uh, we, we said, I think in the letter I said that minimum would be 2200.
I, I understand, I'm just saying that, you know, so in that regard, I think as a matter of procedure and, and expectations are, I'm trying to get a consensus from the, from the trustees, where do you want to see this go? And I'd hate to make an exception this time and then find out, eh, it's probably not the best thing we should have done personally. You know, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to have one more thought put into it. I know some of this is being presented to you guys, and you may want to talk to some of the residents in Eagle Fair, see how they feel about it. I'm just saying, because, you know, I'm sure they'd be delighted to see other homes built because that means, you know, there's more opportunity for their houses to maintain better by.
That's correct, yeah, but again, like, we can't, we can't overbuild for, for the, for the present economy, you know, we can't overbuild if we're going to be back to the old situation.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Are we looking at frame homes also, or are you looking at the brick?
No, there's a brick on first floor, that's, that's in the garden, so, you know, I, this is, one of the ones, the blueprints I gave to Mr. Wallace. I've got two blueprints here. This is the lot, this is the lot, my first choice, that I have available. That's like 2,300 square feet.
Those, uh, blueprints where they were run through the building department for a perjury review, which you need all the qualifications. There's a few line items that needed to be double-checked, but, uh, that would be, is it standard design of a licensed, you know, architect, it would be acceptable to, it would meet the code, is what I'm trying to say.
I had a question for, uh, Mr. Flanagan. About six or nine months ago, you came before this board with a variance of this, a request similar. Uh, you pointed to a home in, uh, Richdon Park that you had built. Uh, are any of these designs?
This is it, right here.
That's the Richdon Park home.
Right.
Okay. And, uh, this one, is this a 2,200?
That's 2,200, yes.
That, and that one is?
It's like 23.
So, and I just want to clarify then, the conversation you had with Wallace about the step, that needs that plus or minus.
Right.
So if we were looking at a home with 3,200 square feet and going step plus or minus 10%, if you had a home at 32, two lots over, you could still have one to be built again at 32, so, so that in that fifth one wouldn't be 2,200.
Um, I guess I would, you know, uh, I guess I would feel more comfortable, uh, if I had, uh, I, I, I remember going over to that home and taking some pictures of it just for my own edification. Uh, I would become, I don't know if we're going to make a decision, be able to make a decision on this tonight, but I would love to see the board have pictures of the idea of homes that you want to build. I mean, for some of us, drawings are fine, but I'm sure you have other spec homes similar to this in the area that you could have some pictures showing for us.
I'm, I'm just going to put it out here like this, because I know, I'd like to see this move forward, but I also know that we want to do it the right way.
All right.
Um, I don't know that even if we give you approval tonight, that, that means you'd have a house built yet this fall, I don't know what your thoughts are.
I, I was, I was hoping because like, as I was saying, winter's coming, you know, we're not, I don't understand.
Well, and, and Seamus, you know, forgive me for being a little bit pragmatic on this because we have had a little bit of a history with that subdivision, so I, I don't want to make another mistake.
Right.
Um, I would think that it would be prudent for us to consider tabling it for further discussion at the next meeting and/or submitting it to P and Z. And I would personally like to see it go to P and Z. I don't want to delay it unnecessarily. P and Z potentially has a meeting next Wednesday, at which time they could flush this up more specifically. And if any of the trustees have specific thoughts, by all means, share them with Dave ultimately. And, and at which point, it could come back to the general board between two weeks, uh, for a potential vote. So I'm, I'm not trying to delay it, I do want to make sure that it's addressed and it's relevant to what we want to see long-term.
All right.
Not just, uh, yeah, let's try to do this, get it done. So, how do you guys feel about sending it to P and Z or at least tabling it until the next week, next meeting?
I, I just have one question. What's the address of that home in Richdon that you, uh?
Uh, I think it's on the blue, but it's, uh, let me, let me check the print, it might be in print.
Sure.
Because some trustees may want to drive over there and take a look at it.
Sure. Um, I can, I can get it to Mr. Wallace in the next day or something.
All right, I, I, at, at this point, I think that instead of delaying here, I want all the trustees to be very keen on this because this will set the tone for what we do going forward. Um, and it's important, we need to, here's the deal, we talked about development, we talked about economic potential of our community and all that, and there was times when the number of homes we have in the community also influences our, our, so it's important to not just tackle that. But we want to do it the right way.
Question?
Is this unfinished? This, this, this?
Question to the mayor, if we looked at P and Z, what do you envision their, their role in?
I, I would, I would like to see P and Z evaluate on this particular issue, the issue of square, a, a step-down concept. I'd like them to, to see what their, their take on a step-down concept, be it physically next door homes or the next zip. In, in either case, some sort of, in that regard, I'd also like to see, when you talk about step-down, I also think it should address not only step-down and square footage, but the frontage as one variable that needs to be taken into account. So you don't want it to say square footage, it can be step-down, but you also want to maintain a similar frontage to the, um, so that they appear to have similar size, even though it may, you know?
Yeah, well, you know, we, we'll try to make them as similar as we can, but if we, you know, we can make it square.
I'm just saying the width of the hall, I mean, generally speaking, if the width of the hall gives a general appearance, it'd be similar.
That's why I, I, I think this plan looks like, this looks like more than a 2,300 square foot house.
Oh, here, look, this paper.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty big. I think if people want to start off with as a transition project.
Just be patient with us, we want to work through this, we want to accommodate, but we also want to do it right. So can I get a motion since?
Mr. Mayor, just one thing, I got, I got David and Robert here that's, that's provided the financing that they might make at the next meeting, so if you guys have any questions.
Do you guys want to come, just, you know, you know, cheer him on till, you know, till it's first step?
We're behind him all the way.
We're all psyched.
If, if there's any questions on the, on the financing, we're, we're happy to ask, answer them at this session as opposed to coming back and, and answering at the next session, but we're happy to, to answer them then.
I did have a question, I mean. So, uh, when you say the financing, I, is there some, there's some bonding issues that need to, uh, take place before construction? So we're saying that you guys are all bonded, or you will be bonded for?
License and bonded work in the village, you mean? Or I took, I renew my license, it hasn't obtained for five years, five years.
And you're talking about financing, Mr. Flanagan, not the financing of the homes themselves?
We are talking about financing the, the construction of the, of the, of the actual property. We're also, we're also, uh, able to provide some resources for some of the, the mortgage money from some of the banks, Citibank being one of them, uh, US Bank, Fifth Third, and I believe Wells Fargo. So utilizing our relationships with those entities to, uh, to lend to qualified homeowners in this subdivision.
So in order to sell the homes, not to rent the homes currently?
Well, rental would not be an option.
No.
Only loan.
No, I just want to make sure that they're all hearing that.
We're, 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 we're all there that the, the homes will be, uh, for, for purchase. Part of the development would be that we're not going to develop more than we're going to have demand for, so it's going to be based off of supply and demand. And one of the, I guess one note to make is the, the size of the, of the structures are also going to be based on supply and demand. So we're, we're talking about step up and step down. If there's supply for 3,000 square foot homes, we're happy to sell 3,000 square foot homes. It's, it's about really developing these, this, this property that's right now, it's empty land.
Sure.
And making it more economically viable for the, the community as well as for the, uh, the city.
Are you all working with other communities now in development already this year?
Uh, we do have a project in, uh, Sissons, Illinois, in Chicago, and in.
And what are those, um, homes in size compared to these?
Uh, the.
The largest, the largest, uh, project is the Garfield Bridge in Garfield.
Garfield House, yeah. Has 3,600 square feet of house there, and, uh, we're going to be taking another project in, uh, Wall Springs, those houses are going to be 5,000 square feet houses.
Again, it's, it's, it's based on the, the.
The, the, your.
Exactly. But, uh, we had, uh, when I looked at this location, uh, in Moni, I viewed it and I liked that site, but, uh, as, he's my financial advisor from Cover Capital, and we'll, we like to take the very conservative approach, and I, I explained that to Seamus, that I don't want to build the bill just to have that, that, so, everything's very conservative on our end.
Just, just some, any other questions for the lenders?
Yeah, I, I had a question or two. How long have you been building developments, or has your experience been asked?
No problem. I, I was building prior to the, obviously, the crash, and I took a step back on that, and then I started full force this 2003.
How many years are we talking, sir?
In total?
Yes.
Eight years.
Eight years.
Because I took a little break.
And my other question would be, uh, kind of in, a little minorly in conflict with your builder, would you be willing to build a home the same size as what's in there right now, as one of the beginning homes?
Well, I mean.
Houses under 3,200 or whatever it may be. I mean, if that's what, uh, I, I, if that's what market.
Our market, our market study has showed that, has shown that, that, that size construction is not going to fit what the market is, is dictating.
Will not fit?
It will not.
It will fit in other areas, but not here.
That's the market study.
What will fit?
22 to 24, uh, on your scripty.
That's going to be the stumbling block, I believe, you know, just, I'm just one trustee, but we want to see that be as large as, uh, we feel. With your experience, we could handle, and we could handle, in fairness to everyone, you know? And the residents that live there now, you know?
We understand, we understand.
Those are a lot of factors, if, if I personally consider heavily, you know? Thank you.
Anybody else to do it, lenders?
Uh, what do you have to, what do you have to get for a 3,200 square foot house these days? What's the going rate?
Well, that's, uh, that would be the responsibility of that gentleman back there, we do rely on him, he, he's my personal realtor in Chicago and the suburbs as well.
He can answer that.
I don't know if you could answer that right now, I mean, it's, it's about, it's about studying the market. Well, you, you said a 2,200 square foot house has to be under, I read somewhere, 249. So what's a?
A 3,200 square foot house is, is going to be probably over 300,000. Um, you know, you're probably looking right around, you know, depending on, on, you know, amenities to the house and everything and, and, uh, style, you know, the, how many bathrooms and, and stuff you're going to add. Like a four-bedroom, three-bath house, you know, you're, you're probably looking in the low threes. So versus like a 2,200 to 2,400 square foot house in, you know, starting around 249, you know, and it's all about, you know, to, you know, having, having something to start with and then the growth there. The market, you know, is, has been increasing, and we're seeing movement, you know, with builders now. I'm a residential ruler, so we're, you know, we're on the higher end of the market with a lot of homes, and, you know, the key is not to discount what the home sizes are now, but we see in a lot of suburbs that the, the general home size that was normal has been stepped down, you know, like in Frankfurt and, and, and so many, you know, Lamont and so many other southwest suburbs. So, um, is it going to increase? Yeah, as, as the demand increases, as, as people come in and see that there's a, you know, other nice homes that we, we market them and we have something to show them, you know, as, as a beginning stage, then we can, you know, grow to, here's, here's our 2,800 square foot model, here's what, you know, size rooms, bedrooms, first floor, you know, a lot of people nowadays with aging population are forced to have their in-laws or, or family members, and they want a first floor bedroom, so that all increases, that all increases, you know, the size of the home. So, you know, and, and obviously we have the potential to build a bigger home there, and that's, you know, it's good for everybody, but it just depends on, you know, people and how qualified they're and coming into, you know? Because we, I looked at some of the homes that, you know, have been foreclosed on and some of the short sales, and, you know, I took all that into consideration and, and, you know, you want to be conservative on, you know, building a new home, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're not continuing a home that was built four years ago that's, you know, was just foreclosed on and it's on for less than 10% possible.
How old is your market study, you stipulated, but you, you had a market study done?
Sure. Oh, we just, we just did it within the last 30 days.
All right. Any other questions for the, the three?
The three measles.
I have a question for, um, for Seamus. Uh, this one is, is actually 1750 square foot.
Uh, that's, that's not until this lower level, which, uh, Mr. Tom Barton, Tom Barton, yeah, he, he, uh. This, this 700 is, but this unfinished here, that this family home, bedroom, and utility room, that's, that's not until the 700, 200. Mr. Barton added up this, we have to like 20, 38, it was, 23, it's another 580 square feet here in this, that, that does include this. So Mr. Barton revealed this, I already gave it to him, Mr. Wallace gave it to him, and when you add it on, it comes into like 2200, I think it's 238 or 2250 square feet.
All right, so, thank you, yeah, Seamus, a couple more questions for you, so.
Yeah.
So what you're asking for is to identify what the board is willing to do on a step-down transition size. You're also, are you asking also for anything else? I, I mean, obviously you're asking for an exception for the ordinance that we currently have in place for the, uh, the spec room. And I believe you're also asking for a deferment on the impact.
A deferment on the impact fee for one year, yeah, or, or in terms of, or in terms of how it sells.
Right.
And that's only on the models, like if I get a bill of order, then, then I pay it upfront, like, you know? So it's just to help me now on the.
So from the time the permit is issued, you're asking for a deferment on the impact fee?
Right.
Until it sells or, or 12 months, whichever comes first?
Correct, correct.
So if you don't sell in 12 months, you're still going to pay the impact fee that much?
That's correct.
And it's only on the model?
Only on the model homes, yeah.
Sure. But if, but if it's not a model, the impact fee's paying.
Well, I, I, yeah, because it'll be a bill of order thing, you know? Like, I'd be, if I get some of the bill of order, then we pay the, I pay the impact fees upfront when I get the permit, you know?
So, based on the fact that this is very much related to our zoning issues, um, if you guys are all comfortable with it, zoning, P and Z is actually next Wednesday. I would suggest, if you guys would like to make a motion, that this get sent to P and Z, and, um, they can address this at the P and Z meeting and provide us some additional feedback. I'm welcoming you guys to attend that meeting, to hear the discussions going on there and contribute your thoughts there as well. Seamus would more than welcome to come back and participate in that as well.
Okay.
Hopefully by two weeks from now, it can be on the agenda again, but I'd need somebody to make a motion to send it to P and Z if we can. So.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Warren, any discussion this morning?
I just, Mr. Pop, you were asking here a bit about, would you build a tree tower in the square foot house, you know?
If you're buying?
If he, if he built a tree tower in the square foot house, he'd be on the zone if he did, because I would build one right now, you know, I don't think it's, I think we've got to start off from some scratch again, like, can I use some scratch?
My statement was that would satisfy many objections, that's the reason...
Oh, I understand that thought, but you're going to be, you know, you're going to be over treeing.
That's why you have people behind you that know financing that, that's why we wanted a question.
Right.
So the question is kind of answered.
I think with trustee Pop saying here, you've asked for not just one exception, but, you know, a few exceptions.
That's correct.
All right, can you give a roll call on that to send this to P and Z?
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
And trustee Pop?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F4 on the agenda is the bill of all front door replacement. As requested, we returned to the getting a couple of extra quotes on there, and you have the results of those quotes in front of you. Goldie Locks came in at a total price of $7,120.08. A Better Door came in at a price of $8,424.20. Boss Door Company kept their original quote at $6,989. I'm happy to answer any questions that are being made. Our staff recommendation would be to accept the quote from Boss Door in the amount of $6,989.
Got here a motion to approve the acquisition of the doors from Boss Door for the amount specified?
Motion? Yes.
Second.
Horn, Pearson, roll call please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Raisik?
Yes.
I have a comment here.
Sure.
We have some discussion, you guys, right into the vote. So the people understand, because we discussed it at other meetings, but I always like to, if we have to even repeat it, this includes framing, concrete work, and everything. It's not just installing a door or a frame, and there's a lot to it. It's very involved. These are huge doors, they're heavy. The special cylinders alone will tell you on the quote. That's all I want to say. It's really not just painting a door at home.
All right. Of course, you'd need a permit for that, too.
Thank you, sir. Item F5 on the agenda is demolition of 5241 Astor and 5240 West Court Street. We sought and received two quotes, one from D and T Excavating in the amount of $14,100, and the other from Environmental Cleansing Corporation in the amount of $12,830. Based upon review of those, we would recommend accepting a quote from Environmental Cleansing Corporation in the amount of $12,830. Open for questions at this time.
Do we approve this? When would this be executed?
There is a 10-day filing permit that needs to be accommodated to make sure there isn't any asbestos in the building. That actually had been filed, so we're probably looking in the next seven to 10 days.
Supposed to be before...
Yes. That was my next question. Is this going to impact?
Yes, it's possible.
Yep.
Are we sure with weather and fully worked days that we can get this done? Well, trustee Pearson, I won't go on a limb for the weather. But it is our definite intent to have this completed within the next 10 days.
Not to exceed the next 15, because I've been reminded by Public Works at... Are we on 14 now, DJ?
Uh, it is.
Thank you.
Work.
Any other questions on that one, or do you have a motion to approve the board action as requested here on item F5, sorry?
A move.
Thank you. Okay, Pearson, Raisik? Roll call.
Yes, please. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Item F6 on the agenda is trimming and removal at 5241 Astor and 5240 West Court Street and in the Park Pavilion area. We have received a quote, as we requested, from AAA Tree Service, and they quoted the amount of $7,750. And a second quote from Four Seasons Tree Care for the amount of $5,045, both of which are attached for information in the board packet, and it would be staff recommendation to accept the quote from Four Seasons in the amount of $5,045. Is there a conflict on the days when they will be performing their task versus...
I trust the superintendent of Public Works to coordinate this effectively.
Yes, that'd be fine. Okay.
Were there any discussion right here?
Sure.
This physically hurts me to remove 19 trees, and do we have to remove all of them in order to effectively remove and destroy these, you know, the demolition of their homes and their...
Some of the, we had to approve the Public Works superintendent if I can, but I will briefly mention the fact that the trees, we've actually had a couple of different tree services come up and looked at the trees that were there. We want to salvage the trees that are salvageable, actually have a nice area that's going to be like a whole row of trees that are going to be protected, ideally balched around, put some benches and stuff like that underneath, there's a whole line that goes across the one edge of the property line there. The other trees are some that, surprisingly, are infected with the ash ore, you know, so we're having to deal with that. There's a couple of trees that are, that are being dealt with that aren't even on that property, they're actually in front of the pavilion in that area there. There's actually, I believe the one that's actually the root cluster is actually dying.
So since he's deferred to you?
Yeah, I was going to say he's pretty much, but no, we've had a couple of trees that are bug infested. Trustee Gonzalez, where the actual core of the center of the tree is rotted out, so it's going to be a problem in the future, and it's better to...
But they're saving healthy trees there.
We're saving the healthy trees, the row, and there is a visual scope of what we want to do for that area. If you'd like to see it, I'll be working, I can show you. But most of the trees are being saved, although they're the ones that have been diseased or have grown in a deformed way in such that we can't cut everything down around it, and you'll have a bloomerang of a tree sitting there that won't look right.
So you're trying to cut trees down, just by your impression I'm giving to trustee here, as they, Pearson here, you guys looking to be sure that this is all done within a month?
That will be done.
Before parking lot?
It won't be done.
Interesting. Okay.
Is that a test?
No, it's not a test, it's just I have other opinions on what else could be done.
Understood. This is one that won't involve the labor of the Department of Public Works to do, so we will still be doing other tasks out there.
So I think we need to have a discussion on what we're going to use that newly acquired property for. I mean, there's, you know, talk of parking, extra parking and so forth, but my question, DJ, is of these trees that are being removed, how many are infected with the Emerald Ash Board?
I don't have a total count on that. My arborist, the arborist that had visited the site to provide the quote, actually suggested the trees that should be removed, and actually was with the mayor tagging the trees with either disease or a hollow core stump in them to the point of not being able to be saved, so...
Or extreme form, yeah.
So these are being removed not for ease of demolition of the houses and buildings?
Not at all. The ones that were in the way of demolition, actually Public Works has cleared out a lot of them already for water surface disconnects and sanitary disconnects that we've already done, so they could be removed.
I guess I'm just not sure we need to remove 19 trees. I mean, you know, if a tree is diseased with ash ore, I guess, I guess there's no recourse. Although I would, I would, I don't know, I'm conflicted with that myself. I would like us to see, see us save as many trees as we can.
I agree.
You know, maybe we need to adjourn over to the park and walk through there and see what's going on there, but I'm uncomfortable with 19.
We've been looking though, trustee Horn, I feel that we wouldn't know, the gentleman that inspected the trees, you can't see a hollow tree, normally speaking, it might look good, but...
Well, I think to Doug's point, too, and we can probably tell or leave it to the arborist if they're diseased or not, but I want to be very clear that we're saving the trees that we can and only removing diseased ones, not just to make it easy to remove the houses.
Diseased and unhealthy, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what the tree ordinance will say, to not healthy ones, to make it easy, that's all.
Probably there's any that were tagged for removal that were healthy trees.
That's not...
Right. I mean, I know there's a couple that were scrying, like sage or something like that, that were literally growing like this because they were underneath another tree, and, you know, unfortunately, sometimes those other trees become infected, and if you remove that tree, there's no point in leaving one tree stand by itself, it's got a weird shape to both of it.
The tree, if that overhanging tree is removed, then that tree is going to start to look like that.
Not if it's already six or 10 inches in diameter, if I get that...
The actual thought was, once the park plan, the overall park plan is thought through, through you guys on the future of where you would like the park to look like, you guys, once the ordinance has passed on trees, could plot new places to put new trees, ones that would fit your vision of how that park should look like in the future. So there is a plan to replace park trees in that area in the future, but again, it's future.
So do we, do we actually need to move on this right now? I mean, we're still, we don't know what that plot of land, how we're going to use that, therefore, why do we need to, sure, these, we have diseased trees, but there's diseased trees all over town, and we're not rushing to take those out at this point, so...
This is a little time sensitive, only because of the demolition and what we want to do with the area and to keep it safe from any of the trees, it's kind of been on hold.
Well, here's the thing, when you have demolition going on there to deal with, and I know this is the reason why it's kind of timing, because there are, some of them are on the same properties, there's a cost savings and some cases doing it in tandem, because if you have the root area that can be dealt with by the demolition team, as compared to just having to grind it out completely and things of that sort, you have different options for dealing with that. If you deal with them separately, they cost more later on if you have to remove them, because then you're dealing with two different issues. So I think, yeah, I know timing and all that kind of stuff, but doing them in tandem is the best way to deal with it.
It was almost like a contradiction in terms right there, too, because we were just assured that it wasn't the ease of the demolition.
Well, it's not an ease of demolition, but it's, no, because of proximity and the other equipment that's going to be out there anyhow.
Well, it's going to be two different companies doing, one's doing demo and one is doing tree removal.
Okay. All right. I'll accept the motion to proceed with the tree demolition or tree removal for the amount of, I believe it was $5,000, as stated on the proposal by Four Seasons. And that included trimming, it also included some areas that there were in the park, there was a couple trees that needed to be dealt with, so it wasn't just on the other area there. I'll accept the motion for that, please. I'll put that in the motion. Thank you. Second?
I'm second.
Sure.
Roll call?
Please.
Trustee Horn?
No.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Trustee Gray?
No.
Trustee Gonzalez?
No.
And let me just state this, I'm grateful for the fact that, again, we are allowed to have discussions and not agree and agree and all that kind of stuff and have those kind of discussions, it's important. So regardless of whether we see eye to eye on things all the time, it's important we encourage for a civil discussion, so thank you. Next item, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F7 on the agenda is approval and ratification of the trustee telephone poll. On Thursday, August 8th, I conducted a telephone poll in which each trustee was asked to approve an amount not to exceed $45,000 for Fall Fest expenditures. The results of the poll are as follows. All trustees voted in the affirmative, with the exception of trustee Gonzalez, who I was unable to get a hold of at the time. We'd be looking to ratify that.
Okay, so, and just so I can clarify on this, we are working towards revenue sources as well, I think, I'm sure you explained all that as well, sponsorships and such, that are working towards offsetting some of this, significant portion of this, actually likely all of it, can't guarantee that at this point because we're still working on it, but we are working towards that, and we have sponsorships rolling in, and it takes that seed money that is necessary in order to continue forward, so, and following through with the direction given by the board, this is just one of the steps, it's kind of like kids' day, a lot of uncertainty as to whether or not that was going to be pulled off and done well and successful, and we accomplished it. I believe we're going to do the same thing with the Fall Fest. And if I may, just since this is relating to Fall Fest, I would like to throw in something. We have coordinated with the Carnival Company that on Sunday, this will just be my one little plug for the whole thing at this point, we have coordinated with the Fall Fest, with the Carnival that is going to be here on Sunday from 10:30 to 1:00. The Carnival is going, they don't normally open the Carnival till 1 o'clock on Sunday, so from 10:30 to 1:00, it is going to be open for kids with special needs, where they won't even have to pay for anything. And, you know, I've seen this in just one other community that I know of that's done that, and it's just an opportunity where it's not costing the village, it's not costing the, you know, it's just part of setting the tone for how we care about people. And I'm delighted that we're able to manage that, so if you guys know of anybody that has friends, family, whatever else, kids with special needs, let them know that Sunday from 10:30 to 1:00, they can register a little bit before that, and the child will be given a wristband, it'll just be for that timeframe, and they'll have exclusive use of the park, so, and then the regular festive, we can proceed with one. But anyhow, so I just want to throw that in there, it's, I'm thrilled about that part personally, but we need a motion to finalize the, or ratify the voting form at this time. So a motion to proceed with the amount of the phone poll. Do I need to say it different? Not to exceed the $45,000.
Take the motion.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Pop and Gray?
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
During the phone tree, though, during the phone poll, we were told, I was told, that we would have information on, one, who will be tracking these expenditures and what the remaining $30,000 would be for. I don't see that, you know, we have that written in. Trustee Pearson, I did not provide that in the packet. That is the area that Ruben is overseeing, they're setting up the tracking of this $45,000...
thousand dollars, it is basically on a spreadsheet form, and, uh, any expenditure that is made from this has to be okay or logged in to that spreadsheet. Ruben's here, if you care to ask any questions of him. But what I did go over is that there is a reasonable amount, uh, or a significant amount, I should say, in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand dollars plus or minus, that is going to be used for, um, one-time infrastructure expenditures. Uh, I believe I, I spoke to all the trustees regarding that, that would be the installation of a four-hundred amp service and, and the affiliated equipment required to do that, but, uh, I'll turn her over to Ruben for a minute here, he goes, how that'll be tracked.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To your question, all expenditures will be logged into a spreadsheet, um, doing on a daily basis, and to, um, to, for the point of integrity, that spreadsheet is shared with clerk hazer, and, um, at this point, uh, we are communicating verbally, we've made our first expenditure today, it's been logged, and the expenditure, expenditure sheet has been sent over to clerk hazer. So every, every expense, every penny that's spent, uh, first has to be approved, you know, and based upon that approval, um, then is logged, and we're keeping a running tone.
And this isn't being tracked by our village treasurer instead?
The, the treasurer's role does not necessarily include specific, like, transactions, if you will, like that, um, but the finance, um, office, if you will, uh, which is a deputy clerk, uh, also, um, is the one who's responsible for cutting the checks, so she's also aware of that, she'll put it into our regular, um, database, if you will, besides, so, all those transactions will be, were being recorded in both, except a spreadsheet for our own local identification, what's going on, without having to get into the database to, you know, to be able to see where we at, where we spent, what, you know, where, you know, what's going where, and what's coming in, what's going out, um, but the financial database we use, Locust, is also tracking that activity as well, which the treasurer does have access to, reports from and such as well.
And another portion of this is also being used to secure the impound for...
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor? Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Just first point of clarification, just so I can, you know, why I was unavailable?
Okay.
I was in South Carolina, and you continually called me on my work cell number, I did not have my work cell number, so...
That's quite right.
So, just a quick point of clarification, I'm not, usually not available.
Whatever, whatever.
Just saying.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez.
Mr. Mayor, I did, Mr. Mayor, item F8 on the agenda, it has to do with website design. The board, uh, previously has authorized to move forward, uh, and look into the potential of a website design. Uh, the mayor and I both have met with, uh, two representatives, uh, Justin Twiman is a programmer who, uh, as your packet indicates, uh, can certainly provide the different modules that the village is seeking in the website, um, it, it basically, his timeframe is thirty to forty business days to get that, uh, up and running, and we're able to add on to that as our needs grow, and, uh, the basic, uh, cost for that is forty-five hundred dollars. And then, as you, if you recall earlier this evening, Jennifer Speaker introduced herself, she represents the Advantage Group and is offering, uh, a similar type of modules that the village is seeking, and, um, a different approach brings it to about six weeks with an approximate cost of about nine thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Both of the, the proposals are available for review, and, um, I would defer to the mayor for any technical questions, as he's certainly more capable than I.
W W W...
The first one, Justin, programmer, is he a programmer or is he a website designer?
Well, designer. Yeah, I, you can keep in mind administrative...
That's why I ask the question, it's two different...
You can see why I defer.
And then, um, what group or what, um, organization does Justin work for?
Division eighty-four.
Division eighty-four?
Yes.
And is there any way, in the things that you, in both proposals that you looked at, do you see the difference, um, why, or why there's such a significant price difference, if they're both offering the same sorts of...
I was able to beat one up on the prices more of a general. I, as a serious, um, I, I've, I've seen the work of the first person, uh, the second person seems to have some good content as well, seems like the second person tends to rely more on templates, uh, the first person tends to do more raw development, um, which is, uh, I, I, which was, I know that the links that were provided by the second individual, um, I indicated there's like five links of sites that they've done work on, I think only one of those actually worked, when I went to, if I recall, I said, did you confirm the same ground?
I did, uh, go to some of those links and encountered some problems, um, the only thing I will say, because I don't understand how all of that works, is that, if those, if those sites are now being manned by the owners...
Somebody else.
And yet somebody else is not being kept up, maybe that's the reason for the problem.
Or, or maybe they're just temporary sites or something, but they weren't available in a way to look at.
Yes, but they were not functioning.
Right, so...
So, that being said, on those two things, on both proposals, we will be the, do the maintenance or the upkeep or the...
We'll, we'll, and that brings up a different issue, but, yeah, we'll be the, we'll be the owners of the content and development of all that, um...
But will somebody here have the ability to...
Yes, it, I know, I, I know that both of them indicated the ability to have an interface that would be similar to using, say, Microsoft Word as an input.
Well, I, I myself have done that with templates and website maintenance, and it's, it's not hard, okay, you don't have to use HTML language to be able to maintain it.
Right, so it's not gonna require extra programs, as the current site does, because back when that was developed, there wasn't that much content management, CMS, there wasn't as much content management system access, it was really relying more on programmers six years ago, five years ago, whatever, um, the, the trend obviously now is make it as simple as easy and easy to use as possible, um, this would have a content management interface, either one of them would.
So if we needed content updated or added, we don't have to wait for three to four days for someone to be able to do it?
No, general content, if you're talking structural changes, that's kinda like nowadays, it's parallel to, you have a twenty-five hundred, no, a twenty-five, twenty-five hundred square foot home that Shamus builds for you, and you decide, I really do want three thousand square feet, so you have to add on a five hundred square foot addition to it, you need a programmer, an architect, or whatever you wanna call it, designer, uh, to be involved in that part of the process, but once it's there, you move your furniture around within there, you put pictures on the walls any way you want to, that's a content management, that's what we would have, our internal staff would be capable of doing more easily. Um, I know the, the first individual had also talked to you about, uh, a few other things that would be useful for, what is it, uh, calendar management, because right now we're having some issues even internally and to the public regarding our calendaring and stuff like that, uh, the first individuals got experience doing that as well, um, I didn't get that information from the second, but I know the first one has experience doing, um, uh, calendar management, if you will, so that, uh, you can actually have, currently what we have right now, they put stuff on the calendar we have here, and it goes out to the entire, and some of that was implemented, um, as a gesture by the first individual, um, showing us how some of that can be done more easily, just using a standard interface, um, so...
Question. So what do you see, now you mentioned the calendar, what, what other features do you see improved with a, a website?
Well, besides the content management, I know that's, that's certainly, you know, an issue of concern regarding our staffing and things like that, um, it's unfortunate that all the content management you see being done right now has to be done by your mayor. Um, the, um, the other thing I would like to see would be, uh, an economic development interface, uh, that would allow for something like, if you're going to Priceline dot com almost, where you're, and this is one of those things, it doesn't have to be implemented right away, but I see this potential, you go to Priceline or something like that, you know, looking for a hotel stay at a resort or something like that, I would like to see an economic development piece in our website that would allow developers, they, they find out about our village, and we potentially could have listed all of the parcels for commercial industrial, the zoning, the TIF, the infrastructure that's available, things of that sort, so you can actually see all the amenities that are potentially available on all of our commercial development areas, so from an economic development standpoint, that's a huge add-on that would, I mean, not cost-wise necessarily, but it's just a huge benefit to set ourselves ahead of a lot of other communities, because you just don't see a lot of them out there, and, uh, that's something I have a vision to see happen, because I really believe your website is the front, the marketing to the people who have not yet met you, and you wanna give them a reason to find out, oh, they, I'm looking for a five hundred square foot warehouse, you know, or acreage necessary to build something like that, and if you have that information available, then we could implement that, and, uh, which, again, it's all about using the tools necessary to not just post your agenda in your minutes and things like that, but actually use it as a building for our community.
And this Justin, gentleman, Justin Twiman, and Division eighty-four, you're comfortable with this company, I've never heard of him before, so, establish...
I, I've seen his work.
So this is his company?
Yes. I, you always have something to say, I just wondered if you had something to say on one side.
Nope. I don't even have it turned on. Thank you, Julie Pop. That's my kind of, if you wanted.
Yeah, I know, I know. Anybody else for discussions?
Why is there such, do you have any, you know, why there's such disparity between these two prices?
What's the other one?
I was joking, but I was serious too, I mean...
I'm sorry, she did, she did ask that.
I, I might have a little insight into that, uh, just, uh, from a, uh, a layperson, if, uh, Mr. Twiman is the owner of the company, that would lend me to believe that that might be a smaller company than an Advantage Group, um, type of company, uh, so, you get into some overhead costing there and things of that nature, but, that's, that's my only suggestion that I have.
Somebody wanna make a recommendation? I mean, you guys have the information to build it, right?
I'll make that motion.
How so?
Motion to do what?
Uh, to move forward with the website design.
By?
With, uh, Justin Twiman at Division eighty-four.
In the amount of...
Four thousand five hundred for...
Okay.
And done within thirty-four new business days timeframe.
You good with that? Okay, any more discussion or roll call, please?
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I do have just a couple of brief things, an update on the Safe Routes to School, um, there was a slight delay there for two reasons, one was to remove some additional trees that were in easement, number two is that there is a Comcast cable that is directly in the way, not the entire route, but partially Comcast, I met them on site, uh, and, um, they have been, uh, moving this up on their list, very nice, so we appreciate that, and, uh, they should pick back up here shortly. Additionally, I just have to quicken up, and so we got a reminder from Nycor, Nycor Gas Company regarding the importance of, uh, notifying or calling in Julie before you dig anywhere, whether it's on your personal property or not your personal property, and, um, this would be a good time to just make it, uh, well-known, as a public service reminder, to please call Julie at eight-one-one, uh, before, um, you do any digging. And last but not least, I would like to announce that, uh, the new Culvers is, um, uh, looking for, uh, employees, uh, potential, uh, future employees, rather, to man the new Culvers that will be opening in September. They have picked an open interview day on Saturday, September seventh, from nine AM to four PM, at the Super Eight Hotel and Conference Room, which is located directly by, behind the newly constructed Culvers on Mooney Manhattan Road. Um, no appointment is necessary, you just need to simply arrive between nine AM and four PM for an on-spot interview, uh, we, they're asking that you, uh, relay that information to any friends and family, and additionally, you can also, uh, fill out an application on the Culvers website, so, if you have any, uh, people that, you know, are looking for employment, again, that's September seventh, uh, at the Super Eight, from nine AM to four PM, at all AMs.
Thank you.
That's doing Fall Fest.
Pardon me? Yes, it is.
Business rules are.
Kinda like the weather of trustee Pearson, I did not say that.
Did we get a, after we do a department head's prepared summary?
Sure.
Now it's up to you.
No, I think, uh, I think, uh, Ruben would like to start off with our department head report, uh, this evening.
For the sake of time, I wouldn't agree. Uh, first off, with, uh, park programs, we have had a successful run, we are in week four of weeks, uh, six weeks, we've had seventy-five people that have signed up and are part of our fitness programs, uh, being Fit for Seniors, Zumba, Boot Camp and Crunch Time. Uh, we are looking, uh, for the Fall to continue our programs, we've, uh, we're conducting a survey currently, and so far with those surveys that have been received, they've all been favorable, and all of them are, are asking for us to continue the program, so, kudos to the board for its approval. Uh, moving to Fall Fest, we are, uh, currently locked in with eight bands over the three-day period, uh, those bands, um, are with, our biggest being, um, obviously, American English and Infinity, um, just based on those bands alone, specifically Infinity, we are getting calls from vendors, uh, there are vendors that actually just follow this group around because of the crowds that, uh, tend to follow this group, so, that is exciting news for us, and we're looking for, uh, large crowds, uh, to attend our event. Um, along with the, the bands, um, and the food, what we have set up is Bingo, we will have Bingo at our pavilion, and that'll be run on Saturday and Sunday, we have a beanbag tournament, we'll have two contests, a baby contest and a pet contest, and the pet contest will be co-hosted by the Animal Wellness Center, who, uh, have gracefully, uh, have accepted our offer and will actually, let's say, help us facilitate the contest, so if you got a pet that looks like you, uh, you're one of the, uh, to enter. Um, we also will have a car show on Saturday morning following our parade, the car show will run, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's eleven to two on Saturday, and, uh, over the weekend, um, we had some representatives go out to a car show on Morris, and I believe it was almost close to nine hundred cars, and, uh, even about five hundred flyers were passed out to, uh, those that were in that car show, and, uh, with a favorable response from, from many of those enthusiasts. Um, on Sunday, the mayor mentioned about, um, our event that we're hosting with our special needs children in the area, we're also reaching out to, um, Make-A-Wish Foundation and...
Angels on Assignment.
Angels on Assignment, and, um, I believe also already have calls into, uh, Special Olympics as well to partner with us. Uh, we've also have asked the police department... Uh, we've also have asked the Police Department, the Fire Department and Public Works to help us as volunteers with, um, helping the children on rides, off of rides, in and out of vehicles and so forth. Um, and I think that'll be a, a special gesture made by the village, uh, as we move forward with the project. We're also looking for sponsors, so get the word out. We'll always take, uh, we'll take any help we can. And that's all I've got. Thank you. I'll, I'll take in questions if there's any questions.
Justine.
Okay, so one.
One, um, the, on Sunday morning that, you know, this, um, for the Special Olympics, did you reach out to the SSSRC, the South of Oregon Special Recreation Committee?
I, 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 look, if you want to, if you can, I am not called Joanne and she's the person I know from there.
No, I would be honored if you're one of them. I just need.
That's fine. But if you, if you want to reach out to somebody, that's fine. I figured we'd reach out to them anyway as well.
All that I would ask is if anyone is reaching out just to, to filter, let me know about it because we want to make sure that it's in our announcements as we're mentioning our sponsors, hearing our bands, our breaks, um, between bands, we are going to, um, obviously we want to recognize those that are partnering with us, whether it's financial or, uh, resources, volunteers. Um, we want to make sure that they're recognized. So just let me know about it. Okay, thank you.
Superintendent Brazil.
Good evening. Ruben chickened out on me. We were gonna, we were just gonna, uh, talk about, uh, nothing to report today, but, um. I just want to thank the community for coming out to a, uh, a kids movie in the park that we, uh, held recently. It was a great turnout. We had more kids, more families than I could count. We went through a case and a half of popcorn, nattered about a hundred dollars in sales for concessions and, um, it was quite a turnout to the point where we're gonna have one more date, uh, on the holiday weekend for another movie. It'll be on the market, watch for the signs. We have one coming up this weekend and I won't, I won't go back for Trustee Horn if he wants to bring that up, but.
Go ahead, you can.
Cast a blanket this weekend, um, for movies in the park on Saturday. Uh, amongst some of the other things Public Works is doing right now, infrastructure-wise, we are, uh, trimming trees in the area that are blocking signs, signage as they come into full bloom and hang down. So watch for those guys out there. And we're also, uh, I'm happy to say with the infrastructure as far as the water department goes, uh, one of our part-time help, Teddy's been a great asset to us. He's installed over two hundred MXUs to get our water system up, uh, to the newest technology that we have. Well, we've had him for summer help. Thursday's his last day. He's gonna be missed. He's got, uh, most of those installed right now and, uh, and with tomorrow being there, we should have all of our deficit meters that were installed throughout the last couple of years up to date, so. He's done a great job for us. He will be missed while he's gone. And, uh, last but not least, uh, just keep an eye out for, uh, the mosquitoes. Keep your area clean. Uh, we've been sending sample results and a lot of the communities around the area have been, uh, testing positive for West Nile. Our community has not yet. Uh, we're waiting for results. They get sent out every day as soon as West Nile gets reported. Uh, I'll let you guys know. Keep your standing water from your homes gutters clean. I know we haven't had a lot of rainwater, so as water stays stale, uh, it can attract the bug. And, uh, really, uh, watch for our guys out there spraying, uh, to keep the populations down. We've already larvicided, as I said earlier, so that's pretty much it. Questions, comments, concerns? Cat, how great, right?
Are mosquitoes spraying? Now we, well, we still run in ours?
We are, yes. Yes, we are.
Make sure people say, say what you're saying.
Uh, actually, that, it has a, it has a bad rap, but the chemical's not dangerous to us. It's so dilute, we could drink it. It's not that bad, so.
David, have you had an opportunity to check out that proposal I mentioned to you about Linden between Maine and?
I have actually. I've discussed that with Administrator Wallace for future site. Um, we did discuss they had a concern about the drainage in that area. It is brought up and it is on our radar with other things being as they are. And, uh, you know, we will, uh, we will trust that in the future.
Now, we, we collected the west side of the street.
We have.
White, well, it was a resource, at least as far as I was concerned. We have frozen piece of ice there every year, if you recall, on the corner of Maine and, uh, Linden. That would be the, uh, it laid at the, um, south-west corner. Be there all day. Frozen water there because the, the ground can't take the amount of water. That's been corrected. But now the other side, I've been told with all the driveways and different tributaries there, our homes and everything, the culverts are full.
And that's the concern that we've had in discussing that, not to just go out there and take care of one area. That may be of concern, but to actually have the whole block, uh, checked on that side also as well if there's.
One of our older areas, uh, obviously needs some help.
Correct, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Chief Zipcar.
Okay, I'm gonna demonstrate brevity. People of a couple of things. Sheriff's Office has notified us that, uh, ATVs are being stolen from home sheds and armed. So if you have one or you have a shed, please make sure you lock it and lock it up so that we don't start that trend happening. And so far, we've been exempt from it and, uh, probably because we do such a good job of arresting the people that do that kind of stuff. But so that everybody's aware. Uh, the other thing is that school kids are gonna be in full swing again next week, so we need to be watching out for them on the roads. Uh, the Police Department lobby should be back open and fully functional hopefully next week thanks to the renovation being finished up. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna need about thirty thousand dollars to go chase down a felon who's fled to India. I hope you can approve that.
Are you sure that's not one of those investments that they send you through the email? Do you have a prince in Nigeria or something like that?
One of the people that we've arrested just recently for, uh, criminal sexual assault has migrated back to India unfortunately. And we're working with US Marshal Service to attempt action. Yes, sir, yes, sir. And a report was always, uh, came back.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our report.
Uh, Mr. Batista, I believe you have a meeting scheduled for Monday for.
Yes.
Just, that's fine. What time is it gonna be?
Monday at six-thirty. It'll be at the Park Building. It's for.
Any volunteers?
For volunteers for the Fall Fest. Uh, it's those that are, are helping to facilitate. I had six PM, anybody else? Uh, six-thirty.
I would change it to six for earlier.
Yeah. I, I apologize. You are, I stand corrected. It is six o'clock. There was a conflict. It's six o'clock on Monday.
Well, it's not Tuesday, that'd be your.
It is. Six o'clock?
I just want to make sure everybody, you know.
Thank you for pointing it out.
You want me to point anything else out? Okay. On the mayor's agenda, I, I was brought to my attention that we have a, uh, someone's kind of slipped through. We have, with IMRF, we have a, um, authorized agent, a notice of appointment of authorized agent. In the past, it's always been the authorized agent was the clerk and the acting point of contact was a deputy clerk. Um, the deputy clerk hasn't changed, but clerk has, so I'm just praying it's your attention. Um, we'll need to have a new resolution, new resolu, new resolution that, on their paperwork that needs to be submitted to them indicating, um, the current clerk and deputy clerk has points of reference for that. And, uh, we'll have that prepared for next week if that's, or next, next meeting I should say. I just, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So, any objections to having that over, prepare for that? Okay. All right, um. That's it for me. How's that feel, brother?
Very, I think it's really brief. We got two items for the board. The first item is the ordinance for the Culvers Department versus ordinance fifteen-eight-nine. So these new ordinance will create the position Public Works will be consisting of a superintendent, one mechanical maintenance technician, one water technician, one electrical technician, three full-time laborers, various part-time employees and unofficial employees as authorized by the Village Board. The superintendent is appointed by the mayor along with advising and telling the village trustees. Either her salary will be reviewed on an annual basis. It's up for the board review and consideration.
Point of clarification, if I may. That, that, the agenda has a typo on it. It, it should be a, an approval of an ordinance, amending Culvers Department? Not repealing.
It's actually, Mr. Mayor, it's actually a little bit incomplete because it's so long. The ordinance actually does get repealed and replaced in its entirety, so.
I, I didn't want DJ or whoever else to get all, you know, like. Yeah, we're out social.
That would have been the start of my speech.
Yeah, yeah. We're out social in the entire department, okay? No, I just, a point of clarification, so it doesn't get all. So we have that and it's just the reaffirmation of the changes that are necessary, is it? Okay.
So can I ask, what is the difference from fifteen-eight-nine to this new one then?
The amended version?
Yes.
Yes, I can, uh, address that. If you recall, we've had conversation in the past, uh, regarding, um, I can't think about it, but it regarding, uh, attrition within that department. And this opens it up from two labors to three labors.
Attrition in that department, so, okay.
Okay, so it gives the, it gives the room by ordinance to add additional personnel, uh, in the labor, uh, department there. It, it, uh, won't be done, obviously, without approval of this board. This is just the first step towards that.
There's. The full scope of this, if I may, is, is generally speaking, it was pertaining to, um, the possibility of a full-timer that may, um, transition out at some point. And in order to retain a part-timer that would be a viable candidate for a full-time position, we need to accommodate this or we can't go that step of having adequate coverage to, to move forward with that. That's the summary. Doesn't mean we necessarily move through with that or whatever. It just means we have that allowance to do with this. Is it an ordinance somewhere?
Sixteen fifty-four.
Uh, entertaining motion to approve. Jurison. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Justine Racing.
Yeah. You had a question, sorry. I know, I had a question on our.
Justine Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And the only other item, this is not for, uh, any type of action, just to update the board. Uh, there has been a, uh, ongoing discussion between ourselves and, uh, yes, I'm like trustee pop when it comes to software versus hardware. How does the mayor, can you talk about it a little further?
Um, we had, we had a vendor providing services to the village that, um, had access to all of the administrative level, uh, resources, to our technology, to our hosting, to our website, to email, to the infrastructure pertaining to all the technology-related resources. One of the things I thought was necessary from the very beginning, the administrator and I sat down with them and asked them, I, not that I needed it personally, but I want to make sure that the administrator has the, village administrator should have full access to that security-related information. It'd be much like having a locksmith come in and, and put locks on their doors. Uh, you want to make sure that the master key is held by somebody of your highest ranking of your, uh, employees. We asked them for that information. They gave us secondary level access. Never gave us a primary level access. Went back to them time and time again. Please give us the actual information that we need. Give us the information you used to log in. We don't want there to be backdoors. We don't want there to be the secondary accesses to these things. We had time and time again, they said, well, we gave it to you. It's like you, you tried authenticating using that information. Find out that you were something short of full supervisory administrative capability to deal with the things that necessary. Every time you confronted them on it, they said, oh, sorry, and they changed it. Um, and then finally got to the point where it's like, I said, no, you screwed up enough times to see the information we're looking for. And they refused and they actually canceled their relationship with us. But unfortunately, in preparation of the potential of a new website and things like that, uh, I tried to authenticate even getting into the domain access. There's a domain registry service that all websites are handled through. That was not even provided to us. Uh, they refused to give it to us. They said, well, we gave you everything we're gonna give you basically and, and it was inadequate. I contacted Larry a couple of times. Um, it wasn't until we threatened legal action that, and we actually proved to them that they did have information there, there worth holding. Um, that they ended up accommodating once again. Don't know yet if there's other things that we don't know that we don't have. You know, sometimes people put yours in, whatever. I'm not saying they're doing anything malicious. That was kind of my undertone when I was dealing with them, but the point is, is that they logged in using their accounts to various aspects of our infrastructure, our hosting, things of that sort. If you have a locksmith come in, walk in your building, you expect your keys to be, the master key to be given to the owner or the manager of the facility. That has not been done still, so there may still be pending legal action necessary in order to get that information from them. It's unfortunate, but the alternate to that is we spend money replacing equipment and, or go complete factory resets on some of the resources we currently have. That may be the only option we have. So I'd rather not have to do, go out and replace all the door locks, so to speak. We don't have to, but I guess it is fortunate that I, my background includes skills that's necessary to do those things. So far, they've been accommodated, but whenever we prove to them that they're not truly giving us the information we're looking for. So that's, it's a legal matter, but it's also something you guys should be aware of that the vendor that we had that years in has been less than cooperative. So, any questions on that?
So this is regarding like email, domain name, registry, like you said?
Internal, internal technology, all your issues? No, that's the locus. This is GTSAC.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Uh, officials reports. Trustee Pop?
Yes.
That's it, all right. Trustee Gray, status?
Uh, status on this is, I talked to the chief a little bit. He's told me there's no problems at the location of the church parking lot. Now, I personally have not talked to the pastor, but observing that parking lot for the last couple of weeks, there's no lights at all. And I don't feel comfortable asking the board to go ahead and prove putting something up as far as four or six basketballs in a park that has no lighting at all. Now, they have one there and it's their property, their, you know, they put it up, it's their responsibility. I would like us to reconsider what I originally proposed, church field. Obviously now with football season going on at Park Lot, our school, we consider possibly using the old parking lot where there is lights, which is a park, which police force have, uh, control.
old parking lot where there is lights, which is a park, which police force have controlled. Again, just my observation, what has happened in the last couple of weeks, there's been actually no problems there. I don't feel comfortable spearheading a project that, yeah, ten kids playing in the dark playing basketball, and something is waiting to happen.
Yeah.
You know, I, if we don't discuss it, that, you know.
I, I think, you know, I actually went up and visited, because in, in, I knew you were working on it as well, I went up and visited the village of Mattson and their community area there. If only. If you've driven by or seen the facilities there, it's impressive. But what they've done is, they've got, obviously, their entire enclosed area, even their exterior areas are fenced in, and they only are allowed access there in certain times. I think that's one of the problems, I think the chief had indicated as well at one point, was it's not just the, I don't know what the words are, it's not just the having the resources, which is a good thing, it's knowing that those resources are going to have, frankly, a little bit of supervision to go with them. A little bit of supervision goes a long way. I agree, having it near the park area is a good idea, but I also don't know the best way to deal with that because we have more and more traffic on Court Street than we've ever had. That proximity to the street itself, you hit a basketball and it's bouncing out, because they're right there next to that guard rail, there used to be fencing around there, I'm not encouraging the idea of putting a big fence there anymore, but.
It's something we can consider, obviously with the, sorry, to the land, you know, just west.
Right.
Just something we can consider too, I mean, we've talked in the past about trying, like, say, building up, you know, like Doug's like, or if I had a stand, you know, something, but I just don't feel comfortable going forward with knowing that they don't, I mean, you see the lights of the day, I didn't know they didn't work until you go past their light.
Old poles have been knocked down for years.
Yes, as you say too, is that they haven't been counted for a while. I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with that here.
Sure. What, and there again, you're going to the issue of supervision and setting up programs and stuff like that, it's not just letting it be a free-for-all necessarily, but having some programming. Some of the stuff are moving forward with the community programs and fitness and all that, and then we talked about, you know, the street hockey options and stuff like that, too. I think the issue, the difference between street hockey and all that is, you know, your goals are going to move off the parking lot or whatever when you're not using them. Superintendent Crizell?
Yes.
If we were to have basketball, portable basketball things out there, is it something that would be reasonable to consider storing them in the bingo shed, if you will, at off times, so we can actually have planned times where the, they get rolled out, put out, and then they get put away, so there are certain hours of the evening, but they're not out there twenty-four seven necessarily? I don't know, I'm just.
Well, there, currently, we have an ordinance against the park being closed, it does, so that would be something to be considered as far as that. The second thing would be who would be HR if it were in also.
I, I know, I know.
And I was thinking that we have to, I mean, you know, I wouldn't want, it would take extra manpower to do that, obviously.
And there again, I think you're going to get your, your best impact if you have some measure of supervision. I'm not saying what that is.
No.
And frankly, I don't know, and there again, I'm not trying to put more on the police department, but if it was something where even the evening shift, if time permitting and all that, if, just for one idea there.
No, right, right, again, my main concern is I just don't feel comfortable going there, I would rather keep it here.
Right. No, I'm not saying like, if we had the, if we had the, I'm suggesting that if we had the hoops where an officer time permitting, we could just simply roll them back in, public horse could come out when they leave in the afternoon, and they can be put away. I'm just, ideas. Just some more discussion.
It might be just, it's been my experience that when you give the police department something to do at seven o'clock, and they're tied up, that it doesn't get done, and then people get disappointed when things get broken, stolen, or whatever, and then the police officers get blamed for things they have no control over. And I think it's important to act if we're there for crime prevention.
I did. Well, some, I, I don't.
I don't know how to yank some sucker truck.
You know, it's like, I can hear saying, just move forward, this, we'll try to get something going, you know, but again, with the whole, everything that's going on with Alvin, the renovation was going on, so we'll just, we'll come up with some sort of thing.
Yeah, I.
I think I can take the winner out of.
But, but I think, I think there again, if, if we're looking at that, it's not beyond the, the process of saying that we're going to have some classes, or classes that open gyms, so to speak, on a court, you know, if we define that, that's easy enough to accommodate, as, as long as we know that, and we had a trustee, or volunteers, or whatever else, we, maybe we can make that happen, but I believe that they, they need to be put away when you're not deliberately getting it, but that's based on the story. Yeah, that's fine, okay.
Man, I had, there used to be a basketball close across the street from the school.
That's, that's not our property.
Why couldn't we work with the school?
We could.
Considering basketball hoods there.
But they had the same issues as, as we have, and I agree, it's probably a better location, but.
It's perfect, it's not being used at all.
Yeah, I think, actually, there, there's still poles in the ground there.
Yeah.
There's always trees.
Completely grown over there.
I'm just talking about, just like Mayor said, I just knew that that wasn't our property, I'd say whatever, now, because again, the big concern that we hear a lot is that kids have nothing to, you know, that's unfortunate, and we're trying as a group to find other things to do.
Yeah, and see, we played baseball, there's a lot of times that school were used.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, if I may, just on, on that note there, the village of Mattson, as an example, offers a, we don't have much to offer them in that, in a comparable level, but they do, they do, they do have cooperative agreements with some of the other neighboring towns, and if you'd like, myself or Mr. Butzis, we could contact them to see if there's anything that would allow us to have some sort of partnership with them.
Actually, you know, and what, what has been done very recently in the past is with the school district, working out with GSU and the township, and open gyms, and use a pool.
Right.
There, and that is something that, you know, I can find out if that's being done for the fall and winter as well.
Sure, and I think they're doing it like, once a month or twice a month or something.
It was every Sunday.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
So that's an option as well, I'm just, you know, if, if you'd like, you can look into that, do you guys want me to check with Mattson to see if there's any, I mean, is that too far away for you guys to feel like it's of any benefit?
Yes.
We can't build, we can't build all that stuff overnight or anything else, so.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else for trustees for official reports?
Yes.
Start with me.
Two things, one, you know, I had brought this to your attention, I just wanted to give a heads up that the village university park is looking, they had to give me back on all the six, and we haven't gotten any information on, on the fault, from that yet, but they're actually considering placing an employee head tax on all their businesses that are twenty-five employees or more.
So they're penalizing them for being successful?
Yeah.
So much for jobs.
So I, it's just something I want to put out there, that as, you know, as we're looking to grow, that, you know, other villages, I guess, feel like they can, you know, push businesses out, so, just heads up.
And there again, that's where I want to commend our administrator for making sure that when we, you know, engage in conversations with development agreements and things like that, with our tip developments and all that kind of stuff, we're not giving everything away in order to bring business to our town. We want to be stable and consistent, we want to bring growth in business to our community, but not to the point where it ends up costing us more than we anticipate, and that sell off our infrastructure to somebody who wants to buy our water lines or whatever else. You know, we'll partner with people that, you know, things of that sort, that's the reason why it's important to, and I'm not saying exactly, because I haven't been astute of everything that's gone on in our neighboring communities, but I know it's important to make sure that we don't give everything away just to get what appears to be growth, it needs to be sustainable and survivable.
How is parking be good, be a little?
Yeah, exactly. Just sell it away while you're at it. Okay.
Trustee Pearson, do you have number two? See, do you have two things?
Yeah, um, never mind, so, disregard.
Anybody else? Okay. At this time, we'll be open to the public, non-agenda items, please, one of your comments at three minutes, from the podium, you have your name and address.
Because it's just me. I'm saying yours is long, I can't see it.
It's in the county chair in the corner, right?
That's Rocky Baderman, six one oh four West Eagle A Road, Piaton Mallway. I'm here representing me, Eagle Ridge Farms. Thank you for giving me the permission to put my farm stand up in town here. It's, it's doing okay, it's slowly growing. Trust me, we're not going to pay all the bills this year, but we'll get a start somewhere, so, but anyway, I came here to ask another favor, if it's possible. We've had a lot of inquiries from our customers, knowing us from our past time we were here, was we did a lot of fall stuff, pumpkins, straw, cornstalks, flowers, stuff like that. We've had a lot of inquiry, if we can bring it back again, which we would like to, but that brings up the problem of more space. The simplest thing I can think of is just if you would allow me to put up a small fence around the backside to contain all this stuff, it's going to sit outside, just something for night security is basically all I'm looking for.
What kind of fence are you looking for?
I'm just thinking a simple panel cyclone-type fence, which you can see through. Something like six foot, six foot tall, probably five foot tall or something, just, just to keep the honest people honest, to face, if you want to steal it, you're going to steal it. Probably, size-wise, we're probably looking at the length of the building and maybe twenty feet to the west.
So it wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't be in front of the building, it ought to be?
It would not be in front of the building, and the front, basically, would probably open completely during the daytime, so it'd be just closed at night.
Any, any thoughts on that? I think the only thing you'd probably need would just be a fence, probably, or, oh, that would. Is it actually staked in the ground, or what is it?
Yeah, probably just going to stake it to the ground, again, it's, this is nothing permanent, so.
Sure.
It's got to be affordable, too.
So it's not, it's not like you even have to even deal with digging holes and putting the post in like that, or anything else?
Dog kennel type pre-main sections, or they just tie together, or they just sit right on the ground?
Yeah, maybe we can, if we, we might have to make a stand or something that's supported, so it doesn't tip over.
It'd be like going to an event where they have them on, on the square basis and stuff like that.
Like an event or something, if they throw up.
If you're not putting it in the ground, so it's safe, then you probably may need a permit for that, that's a problem, or what do you think?
We'd probably at least like to know what's going in there.
Sure.
We'll let the public around there, we want to be sure that it's secure, but we could certainly work with, with Mr. Baderman, not have a problem at all with that. It just, it's, you know, up here before board approval.
It's, it's an anomaly.
Exactly.
Any objections to securing the backyard, basically?
I just had a question, so you see, would this be through like November one?
No, we won't be open any later than Columbus Day, which is second week after October. And that could, that could change, it's going to, this is going to be a short season.
Sure.
I'm going to tell you that right now. Stuff's coming in late and it's going to end quick. We're just barely starting to get some fresh vegetables locally grown.
The reason issue of planning and zoning?
I don't, I don't think so, I don't think so in that role, I mean, it's, it's, it's just, it, it's actually an anomaly in a sense that, just to be formal about it, he's actually coming in before the board, but I don't know that it, it's not even a zoning, really, it's really just an approval of, of a permit almost, but it's not so much even a permit, it's just kind of an exception to the, because normally, you're going to put a fence up, you're going to drive stakes in the ground or whatever else, he made you a couple just to, to hold it in place, but not necessarily fencing, normally even a fencing permit, Charlotte's fence permit costs. And that's if you're actually confirming it is proper depth in the ground and concreted properly and all that, so.
Anybody's been up there, you can't dig in that ground.
No.
Two feet of, two feet of asphalt there.
Yeah, so maybe just an exception for you alone would be adequate there?
Sure, and, and we would take a look at that, and we would only do what's necessary, and again, normally, this is covered by the zoning code, the only reason it's before the board is because the actual business itself was allowed by the board as opposed to the zoning code, so just trying to keep it honest, that's all.
And especially to.
Yep.
So, permission to allow him to, just go ahead and have a fence of the general privacy?
I will, well, I haven't even researched it yet, so, but whatever I find, I'll, I'll bring to the administrator first.
That's fine, okay. Well, we'll defer to the administrator to, to give final consent. Is that, is that a general consensus, it's not really needed a vote, but, okay, everybody okay with that?
Any potatoes yet?
At fifty dollars a bag. That's what potatoes are.
Trustee Gray, once you drop produce off at his house, it's the fourth state open later.
Yeah, green beans right now are fifty dollars a bushel. And that is why we don't have either one.
Working on one, uh.
It's just, it's, it's the season we're having this year, it's, normally, we, we sold tons of potatoes before, and. Nobody planted them up in Minnesota because it rained too much, so now the whole market's upside down.
The peaches are good?
Well, they're good.
Fondue's good, yeah.
Anybody stopped from getting an apple to apples, or the tangling apples?
No.
I'm going to stop and trade them before they're done, because they're going to be short, too.
All right, all right.
Can't pay them anywhere.
So you gave us your address, but with a pending, that may not be your address for very long, or like?
Well, while I was sitting here listening to the board meeting, I did come up with a second request for the evening.
Okay.
While I was sitting back there watching my breath, I was wondering if I could use this room to store produce. It's getting late. Just let it bring it up.
What if they could get their visiting on in the restaurants? All right, any other discussion from the public?
I guess I'm technically not public and I'm not making a trustee report, but I just two things, just wanted to remind everybody, the Cremoni Education Foundation golf outing on Saturday morning at Lincoln Oaks Golf Course, and then on behalf of the Cremoni High School Football Team, I have our eleven fifteen dollar discount cards for a bunch of restaurants and things around town, if anybody's interested in that. And then, and one last thing, and this is where I'm getting on my soapbox really quickly, as all of us are taxpayers in this town, I just wanted to bring up to your attention the Cremoni School District Board. And just to remind, you know, this is our largest body of taxes that we actually pay, and whether we have kids in this district or not, right now, we need to pay attention to the business being done by that school board. There's six, seven volunteers up there controlling a budget of over sixty million dollars. And it's a very scary time in the district right now, and I just want everybody, we have a district representative in town, Mary Stockton, and yes, she is our representative, but that whole board represents all of us, so we need to be watching them very closely and making sure that they're making wise choices, not only for our children in town, but for our communities in general. So I know the mayors are watching them pretty closely, but we all need to, and hold them accountable for every dollar they spend.
And just, just to go along with that point, a very good point, when you look at your tax bills and compare us to neighboring communities, it's our school district that puts us at the, I mean, you compare us to Veacher and Piaton, and their tax bills, the total tax bills, the difference between our communities is the tax bill because we're school district.
And, but that being said, and that tax bill, and it's the school district, that are in our towns, that are going to be, you know, that'll bring people to our towns, and if we don't hold that school district accountable for giving a good education, I'm saying nothing about the teachers there, but nobody will want to come to our community, so we have to, have. to, have to, be watching them.
Okay.
I want to say.
Anybody else?
Sure.
All right, no need to go into executive session again at this point. Before we adjourn, I would like to remind everybody, I know it's getting late, but I believe today is the day that we're doing the benefit for former trustee McGill's family daughter situation there. If you guys feel like going over to Culvers and Creek off of three ninety-four there, a percentage of the proceeds of the sales today, do you go to benefit the, the cost and such that were incurred by the two children that were unfortunately taken from these? So with nothing others, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Born?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Stop?
Yes.
Raisik?